Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Please stand and pledge allegiance to the main standing for opening your lines by all members of the court.
Allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the world of justice, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First day of July of 2025, I'd like to bring to our attention a few notable days, events, and recognize some special people. First, on Friday, we will celebrate the Fourth of July and commemorate our nation's birth. While this is a time for family picnics, fireworks, and social gatherings, I'd like to ask my fellow Americans to consider where we are at this junction in our great republic and remind them that our freedoms did not come without a cost and often pushing back and when our government did not always reflect a perfect union. Would also like to implore that as we celebrate with fireworks, that we do so with safety in mind, be mindful of our city ordinances, but also respectful of our friends, neighbors, who are veterans, elderly, and have pets. Keep Omaha Beautiful has great resources on how to dispose of fireworks safely. And remember, if you choose to shoot off fireworks, please leave our parks, sidewalks, and neighborhoods better than you found it. I'd also like to give a shout out to a special person, Drayon. On July 16th, he is a former voice contestant and also a now opener for Earth, Wind, and Fire will be performing at the Astro Amphitheater. This is significantly important because he, along with the longstanding BAM member, Philip Bailey, are bringing back a special charitable initiative called Backstage Soundcheck within the 2025 National Tour, which is specific to Drayon, who is also an advocate for foster care. And finally, I'd like to recognize that on July 28th through August 4th, we will mark the 25th Biennial Native Omaha Days, where thousands of Omahans will enjoy week-long events of entertainment, parades, graduations, and festivities. So want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
An affidavit that publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the city clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. Council members receive these emails and we read them. Finally, council members may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Dundee's Place located at 7024 Maple Street.
I will open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? Please come up.
Eric Fran, 7830 Military Avenue.
And Courtney Griffith, Fran, 7830 Military Avenue.
Thank you. Here to answer any questions? Thank you. Well, if we have any, we'll ask you. Thanks for being here. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any proponents? Opponents, let me get that straight. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Any discussion? Lights on. Mr. Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Welcome. Look forward to seeing your business continue there just west of Benson. I know we have some challenging construction happening there right now, right? Are you doing okay with that?
Sure.
We're going to keep trying to push on that and keep that going, a big store and street project there that's been taking a long time. So we appreciate your patience with that and look forward to supporting you today. Motion to approve.
Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Maza located at 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3101.
I will open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? I believe this one's on Zoom.
Yes, I'm here.
Can I get your name and address for the record? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Parvis Otwell. My address is 2223 South 63rd Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today on item number seven? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item number seven today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Any discussion? Council member, we got a motion to approve. I'll make a quick comment. This is in my district. I'll be glad to second this. And as Councilmember Festerson said, I know there's construction going on in midtown. There's some headaches, but I know once that gets done, that it's going to be a great, great bridge to the middle of the city going west. So I'll be glad to support this and wish you the best of luck. Thanks. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Turf Club located at 2404 South 60th Street.
I will open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, Ryan Ollc for their Class C liquor license. Ryan Ollc will be doing business at the Turf Club, which is located at 2404 South 60th Street. This is a new application for an existing bar. The owner, Ryan McClellan, is here. He's a longtime bartender at the bar. If council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Ryan could field them as well. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents here for item number eight? Seeing none, are there any opponents for item eight? Public hearing is closed. Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class C liquor license for the Bohemian located at 1406 South 13th Street.
I will now open the public hearing on item number nine. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? Please come up.
Hello, Graham Baird. My address is 5004 Ernst Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Right, good afternoon. Thanks for being here today. Are there any other proponents here on item number nine? Seeing none, are there any opponents here today? Public hearing is closed. Second. Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class D liquor license for Namaste Bazaar located at 5474 North 90th Street.
I will open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? Good afternoon.
Hello, this is Budiman Rai. I am the owner of Namaste Bazaar, Omaha, Nebraska. My address is 5474 North 90th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134, sorry. Just I want to apply for the liquor license, Class D.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item number 10? I will close the public hearing. Motion and a second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 11, to consider a Class D liquor license for Mega Saver located at 14353 Q Street.
I will open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? Good afternoon.
My name's Alyssa Ray. My address is 14818 U Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents for item number 11? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item number 11? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, to consider a Class K liquor license for Rocco's Pizza and Cantina located at 1302 Mike Fahey Street.
I will open the public hearing on item number 12. Before I call for proponents, the applicant here today? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Collier. My wife and I own Rocco's Pizza and Cantina. My address is 1530 Trumbull Terrace, Platsmith, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents on item number 12? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll support this as well. Looks like you survived the College World Series. Congratulations.
I'm getting old. It was long. It was a grind.
And the grand total of Jell-O shots this year?
I believe we were at 92,000, so. Yeah, it was up there.
And that donation to the food bank then?
About 140,000. My wife and I wrote checks for.
That's fantastic. Yeah, nice work.
Thank you.
Great tradition.
Thank you very much.
Row call.
Goodwin.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Items 13 through 15 can be considered together for rows at Barcalow's located at 4209 and 4215 Ellison Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13 is an ordinance to rezone this property from our 435 district to our 5 district. Item 14 is an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district for this property. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I will open the public hearings for items 13 through 16. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Philip McLean. I am the developer on this site, so I'm here for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents here today on item number 13 through 16? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McLean, if you could come forward here. I'm familiar with your work, but could you tell the council and the public a little more about this project?
This project, it will be a multifamily project, so it will be addressing Omaha's missing middle shortage. So it'll be 14 units, three, four plexes and a duplex. The land is a property that I bought from the land bank. It's an assembled property, so we assembled two lots. Right now, we at our final step on this project to start construction hopefully next week. So we rezoned it, we amended the master plan, did all the things that we needed, grading permit, et cetera. So this is the last part of the plat to get us to that next step. So yeah, this is the site. It'll be 14 units. We plan to make it affordable too, and it's supported by TIF. And yeah.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 17 through 22 can be considered together for View 174 located at 17515 Pacific Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG district to our 6 district. Item 18, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district. Item 19, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district. Items 20 and 21 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 22, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I will open the public hearing for items 17 through 22. I will call for proponents. Are you the applicant today?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Councilmembers Jim Bouger, Panzing Hogan Law Firm, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant. Willie Douglas is here, who represents the developer, and Kyle Vole, the engineer for the project, to answer any questions you might have. This is a project at 120 units, 90 apartment units, and 30 townhome units, generally 175th and Pacific Street. It's about two blocks east of an existing project that was just completed by the same developer. We have met with the neighbors and made a few changes, some landscaping additions, and some modifications to the project to hopefully make them happier with what we're doing. We've also agreed that if the adjacent residents that have single-family homes would like a boundary fence, that we would agree to install a boundary fence along the property line as well. So with that, I'm happy to share a site plan. If anybody'd like to see that, I have some elevations and landscape plan if anybody would like to see it and answer any questions you might have. But we would ask that you approve the rezoning from AG to R6, the enlargement of the MCC overlay, the PUD preliminary and final flats, and the subdivision agreement. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents on items 17 through 22? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Row, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Amy and I are discussing this over here. We think we'd like to see the pictures.
All right. If I can work the fancy contraption up here, I'll show them to you. Technical device? Lifted up?
Keep going.
Taking all that time off. Thanks, Liza. Awesome. Thank you. So just show you a few of the building elevations. Again, the project, the exterior, this is looking from the north. So on the south side and on the west side, those are two-story, the townhome units. And then the interior apartments are in two buildings, 90 units, and they're three stories. And again, just there's some birmingham in the back and some landscaping. Show you a couple more patients here. So that's, you can see, that's a view from, I guess, probably from Pacific Street as well. So the garage units are along Pacific Street. There's a lot there, but just kind of, you can see the exterior finishes, kind of a brick facade look. Anyway, it'll be a nice, nice project. They're market rate apartments and will be in the same price range as what the other project was developed at 177th Street. So. Ms. Melton, Ms. Row? Good enough?
Looks good.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate the brick. I think it's important when you're building there and especially when you're abutting to a residential area. And I'm sorry, I didn't put my light on.
Go with it. You're good. And it's in an MCC overlay zone, so we are required to have some enhanced architecture with the project, so.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Row?
I'll move to approve.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Jim, I think, I remember this case of planning board. There were some neighborhood, not concerns necessarily, but questions that they had, and I think those have all been addressed, it sounds like.
Yes, we've had a lot of discussions with the neighbors. By the fact that there's nobody here on an apartment project, that's a positive, I think, so.
That's a pretty rare instance.
Yeah, it is. So I think the developer and Kyle have done a good job in communicating with the neighbors.
I agree. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Congratulations on your new job here, running for...
You've given it to me already.
I'd be willing to. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jim. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 23, an ordinance to rezone property located at 4508 North 42nd Street from GC District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number 23. Is the applicant here today? Are there any proponents here today on item number 23? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just had a question for Mr. Fanslaw, just if he could let us know what the rezoning entails and why it's important and how it might change or enhance the density.
Sure, yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. This request came to us from the property owner. The site is currently zoned GC general commercial, causes them some problems if the, if the structure's damaged and stuff like that. So to relieve them of any hardship that the code might cause for it being zoned GC, they requested this rezoning to a more compatible zoning district for the existing use.
So there is no new development here? It's really just a rezoning of the current structure and the land surrounding?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further lights, get a motion to approve? Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 24, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2210 South 20th Street from HI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number 24. Applicant, good afternoon.
Mr. President, members, Jerry Stillmack, attorney from Syracuse, Nebraska, 3705th Street, on behalf of the personal representative of the estate. Mary Ann Kurgan is the estate. Patricia Kurgan, daughter of the decedent, is my client requesting rezoning. Just one door south of the old Piccolo Pete's, if you ever had the chance to eat there. So you have a location. Plan Commission recommended approval, and it conforms with the future land use. Thank you. I'll stand at ease.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents here today? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. I'll support this in my district as well. Thank you very much for coming today and making me hungry for Piccolos again, bringing that up, so. Thanks. Row call.
Mr. President.
Oh, I apologize. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm supportive too. I just want to recognize Jerry. He informed me before the meeting started, this is his last week in the office, I believe. So he's been a longtime and successful attorney who's appeared before many legislative bodies, so I want to congratulate you on your retirement and a successful career.
You're very kind. Thank you for your words.
Thanks.
Sir.
Thank you. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Good day. Thank you, members.
Item 25, an ordinance to rezone property located at 20111 South HWS Cleveland Boulevard from R5 District to R6 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number 25. You the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And council members, Bradley Hyke, 10836 Old Mill Road, Omaha, 68154, here on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents on item 25? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 26, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2316 North 48th Street from our 435 district to our 5 district. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here today for item number 26? Are there any other opponent or, excuse me, any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents for item 26? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion and second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton, Row, Festerson. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 27 and 28 can be considered together for properties located along North 24th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 27, an ordinance to rezone those properties from GI district to GC district and GC district to NBD district. Item 28, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate these properties into that district.
I will open the public hearings for items 27 and 28. Is the applicant here today? There she is. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. These are six city-owned parcels of property. We are preparing to sell these properties. As you will see, in number 62 is the purchase agreement for these properties. We like to go ahead and rezone these properties if appropriate before selling them, which is the case here. And then the developer and Habitat for Humanity are also here to answer any questions you may have. And I think Phil's going to speak next.
Thank you.
Phil McLean, I'm the developer on this property, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Did we, did you give your address?
4906 Davenport Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today?
My name is Dan Brewer. My name is Dan Brewer. I'm with Habitat for Humanity of Omaha, and we are here as a proponent. Our address is 1229 Millwork Avenue, Suite 301, here in Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a question for the Planning Department, please. And I asked this in pre-planning. Could you explain for us first the zoning change for Neighborhood Business District? I know it's recommended throughout 24th Street first, and then secondly, that area of significant importance. I know we had a question about where the boundaries began and ended and how we can expect that to potentially expand as development occurs along North 24th Street.
Sure, I can get that mask, Dave, to fill in as well. So with relation to these specific parcels, I've outlined them in red here, and you can see that the zoning on the northern properties, GI General Industrial, and then these properties down here are zoned GC. The ACI, the area of civic importance overlay, there's a district further to the south, but then all along North 24th Street, you can barely see this blue line that indicates where it would be appropriate to adopt an ACI overlay. So as properties are rezoned along this blue line, we like to adopt the ACI overlay along with that. So we like to take the opportunity, when any rezoning or redevelopment happens, to adopt that overlay as well. And they're just a higher design standard. So within this area, it'll be these properties. The Native Omaha Building here to the south is recently rezoned, so that's another one. The Salvation Army is another example. And then the first reading for the Manderson Market Building is on the agenda as an on-action item today. So as you can see, along North 24th Street, as these properties are rezoned, we're taking the opportunity to adopt that overlay as well.
Thank you. And with the ACI overlay, does that have any correlation to the historic district on North 24th Street? Or is it, what does the civic importance essentially mean?
So if I can, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. So if I can, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Councilman Goodwin, it, an A C I district will bring with it the most, highest design standards that we have for building design. It'll talk about site design and where the building should be positioned on the site relative to the street. So it brings that higher design standard that you see along most of the major corridors in Omaha.
Thank you for that. And how does the A C I correspond with the streetscape plan?
It'll be, the, they'll work together. A C I doesn't necessarily prescribe streetscape, but I know that there's efforts, separate efforts going, ongoing, that are dealing with the streetscape. So they'll work together. I mean, any streetscape that happens along North 24th Street will take, any buildings that happen will take that into consideration. So they'll work together. But again, A C I doesn't prescribe necessarily public improvements, streetscape in the public right of way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If I could add one more thing, we are putting together that information for you that I said we'd get to you. It's just going to take a little while. So as soon as we get that, we'll show you the bigger picture along that corridor.
That's awesome. I did have a few questions for Mr. McLean. Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. McLean, I'm familiar with this project because you met with stakeholders a few weeks ago, along with the city, to talk about it. But could you tell the listeners in our council a little more about it, please?
Sure. Our plan is obviously to rezon this site and do a mixed-use project. There'll be, it spans from lair to spray, spray to salas, so two whole city blocks. Some of the properties are city parcels, and the other, other parcels are Habitat for Humanity parcels, and I'm going to take ownership of all of them. So the lair to spray side of the block, closer to lair, we'll do seven single-family town homes. They'll be about 2,200 square feet, three bedroom, three bath, two-car garage. And then there'll be a mixed-use building that'll have four commercial spaces, space on the corner for a bank. And then we also have a space for a food court to kind of invite some entrepreneurial opportunities there for food and other opportunities for just engagement. And then also the spray to salas side of the block. For two years, we planned to just de-plat it and make it a community space where we do farmers market, some gatherings for the community, community events. And then as we, as that time passes, we'll go out and do more community engagement to understand what the community wants to see on that site, and then redevelop that one.
Thank you. And I wanted just to mention to this council that Mr. McLean has really been very active in not only reaching out to the community, he already has a schedule of community engagement that's already planned and participated in our Juneteenth parade, understands our focus on clean and green. And so we're looking forward to this development moving forward in that area. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Seeing no further lights, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 29 and 30 can be considered together for property located at 2601 North 24th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 29 is an ordinance to rezon this property from R 7 District and G C District to M B D District. Item 30, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the A C I district to incorporate this property into that district.
I will open the public hearings on items 29 and 30, and the applicant is already here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Ralph Lassiter, representing the project owner, Mount Moriah Baptist Church. My address is 2409 North 161st Street. With me, Pastor T. Michael Williams, pastor of Mount Moriah Church, as well as Joe.
Joe Detlowes with DD 210836 Old Mill Road.
Thank you. Might have some questions for you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents here today, items 29 and 30?
Yes, sir. Donnie Yar Johnson, the Johnson E. Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I'd like to take this time out to congratulate Mrs. Goodwin.
Thank you.
And Mr. Begley, and Mr. Harding, for his new nomination to House Representative. But I wanted to go back here for a second. In 1980, myself and George Davis and Jim, Jim Hart was in charge of the N double A C P. And George Davis went off to the House of Representatives with Hal Dobbs, and they sent me off to the United Nations.
Donnie, we got to stay on 29 and 30 here.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, these developments that we have been discussing all the way up to this point, one of the arguments is about these flat tops and slanted houses. And I think they're going to get themselves in some trouble, because our engineer says flat tops eventually will cause collapse of the building. So when our snow condition, our snow changes everything when you start developing and designing. So if all this snow is on top of these buildings and the housing they're developing, is that a good thing or a bad thing for the consumers in the future?
Thank you. Are there any other opponents here today? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
We had a lot of activity happening on North 24th Street and District 2. It's exciting. We could have Mr. Lassiter, please. I've observed quite a bit of movement on this project, so congratulations. Can you tell us a little more about it, please?
Certainly. The project is actually comprised of two components. On the corner of 24th and Ohio, we are constructing a three-story, 20,000-square-foot commercial space that will, on the first floor, house a fast casual restaurant, some retail space. It will also house a large multipurpose space for community gatherings, concerts, conferences. On the second and third floor will be spaces for entrepreneurs and businesses to locate there. Across the street, and this relates to item number 30, since North Omaha has pretty much a parking desert, we are developing a 100-space parking plaza outdoor event space that will support the parking requirements of the Moriah Intergenerational Center. We've conducted a number of public outreaches. We've talked to the neighbors individually, and they're all in support of this project.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Goodwin, Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 31, a resolution to approve the South Omaha Global Market Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 5125 South 24th Street, in an amount up to $827,591.
I will open the public hearing on item number 31. Mr. Seaton, good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning. This project is located on South 24th Street in the core commercial district of South Omaha. A vacant building, looks like this, most previously was operated by or occupied by a thrift store. That building is a fairly large building, about 18,000, 19,000 square feet, will be thoroughly rehabilitated to become a business incubator for food service businesses. There will be 16 leased indoor food vendor spaces and an indoor event space for weekend markets. There will also be parking space available on the site for up to four food trucks to park and operate. The developer is GPA Properties LLC. It's managed by Gloria Patricia Avalos. This project is an investment of 9.4 million into the building and into the South Omaha neighborhood, and the TIF support for the project is $827,591. This is a good project for the development of small and emerging businesses, meets the required criteria of our TIF program, is appropriate land use for the area, and is compliant with our city's master plan. And here's a rendering of the proposal. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents for item number 31?
Yes, Donnie Yar Johnson, the Johnson E. Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. On his structure of these buildings that we've been seeing up here, my architect teacher who helped develop Benson, he said if you build this way, that snow will remove itself from the house. If you build it with a flat.
Donnie, let's stay on the TIF for item number 31 here, please.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to figure out the flat tops. Is this good for consumers, or is these buildings going to collapse over a couple of years or so? So do you think we should bring these engineers who are designing these flat tops back to before the city council, so they can tell us that this snow, when it piles on top of the buildings, is going to collapse on these people's houses? It's a good point.
Are there any other opponents here today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Approve.
Got it. Motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Goodwin, Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 31, a resolution to approve the South Omaha Global Market Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 5125 South 24th Street, in an amount up to $827,591.
I will open the public hearing on item number 31. Mr. Seaton, good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning. This project is located on South 24th Street in the core commercial district of South Omaha. A vacant building, looks like this, most previously was operated by or occupied by a thrift store. That building is a fairly large building, about 18,000, 19,000 square feet, will be thoroughly rehabilitated to become a business incubator for food service businesses. There will be 16 leased indoor food vendor spaces and an indoor event space for weekend markets. There will also be parking space available on the site for up to four food trucks to park and operate. The developer is GPA Properties LLC. It's managed by Gloria Patricia Avalos. This project is an investment of 9.4 million into the building and into the South Omaha neighborhood, and the TIF support for the project is $827,591. This is a good project for the development of small and emerging businesses, meets the required criteria of our TIF program, is appropriate land use for the area, and is compliant with our city's master plan. And here's a rendering of the proposal. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents for item number 31?
Yes, Donnie Yar Johnson, the Johnson E. Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. On his structure of these buildings that we've been seeing up here, my architect teacher who helped develop Benson, he said if you build this way, that snow will remove itself from the house. If you build it with a flat.
Donnie, let's stay on the TIF for item number 31 here, please.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to figure out the flat tops. Is this good for consumers, or is these buildings going to collapse over a couple of years or so? So do you think we should bring these engineers who are designing these flat tops back to before the city council, so they can tell us that this snow, when it piles on top of the buildings, is going to collapse on these people's houses? It's a good point.
Are there any other opponents here today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Approve.
Got it. Motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Goodwin, Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 32 through 43 were held on June 17, 2025. Is there any council discussion on these items? Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm supportive of these items. I just wanted to address number 43 here for a second. This is another major public-private partnership between the city and philanthropy and Mecca that'll take our C H I Health Center into the future and have a huge economic, positive economic impact on our community. And I wanted to bring it up today, because I know we have Roger Dixon and Bob Freeman here in the audience, so I don't expect them to come up. But surely we will have both of you back at some point this year, because since the last time you were here, I think you've both announced you'll be retiring at some point soon. Roger, you had a great story about your achievements with Mecca and serving this facility. Very unusual for someone in your industry to be here for 25 years like you have, and to have the success that you've had with that facility and operating it in the black, which all citizens and taxpayers appreciate. So thank you both for your service. We'll have you back, and I'll motion to approve these items.
Got a motion and a second. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a question for our city attorney for items number 37 and 38. Although I know that there was public hearing on this last time we met as a council, there were some constituent concerns that I thought would be clarified today by our city attorney regarding of the timeline around this original agreement. Could you just tell us a little more about it, please?
So these are two interlocal agreements that are very similar, ones with Douglas County, one is with Washington County. They are for five-year periods. I appreciate the, there's a misstatement in the cover letter, but it's clear when you review the term of the agreement, they're five-year agreements. We have a series of mutual aid agreements with various law enforcement entities in Douglas County, Washington County, and Sarpy County. And that's merely because the way the state statute is written, one only has jurisdiction within the area that they are, that you're, by which you're employed. And in instances where you may need assistance from another entity, you can, by interlocal agreement, enter into something where you provide assistance, but also provide jurisdiction to that entity. And that's what these two interlocal agreements do. It facilitates that if there is, facilitates the ability to train together, and if there is a need for an incident where you need help or additional relief, that Douglas County, that Omaha police officers could go into Washington County or in Douglas County. Obviously, Douglas County sheriff's deputies already have jurisdiction within the city of Omaha, because it includes their jurisdiction. But these have found to be helpful. The intention is, is that the incident will still be managed by the department that's in control. So if we're talking about the city of Omaha, the city of Omaha Police Department will manage the incident, but this provides some potential relief. Probably more important than the other entities where there's less, less police officers and perhaps more need if there's a major incident or an incident that takes an excessive amount of time. And I guess I answered more than your question, but anticipation of some of the others that you might ask.
Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, do we, sorry. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized on the agenda.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to, after the tragedy that happened in Idaho over the weekend, that
was such an unfortunate incident where two firefighters lost their lives, but there was an active shooter incident. Hopefully, we would never have anything like that in any of our jurisdictions. But again, I think that's an example of why these interlocal agreements are so important, so that you could have multiple SWAT teams from the area respond to incidents such as
Mrs. Goodwin was a part of this, would it be eligible for her to also look for acreage for that building that's on 30th and Lake in front of Salem Church? That building there, would that be a part of Omaha Land Bank?
Donnie, this is just for the appointment of Ms. Goodwin to the land bank. That's it.
That's all she, and then she can also approve.
Talk about that later. This is just about a resolution for her approval for appointment.
So she'll be a watchful eye on anyone stealing the land around here for medical marijuana? Never mind.
Is there any opponents for item number 91? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding.
Yes.
Hug, Melton, Rowe, Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 92, an ordinance to approve the 3501 Farnum Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
I will open the public hearing on item number 92. Mr. Seaton, good afternoon.
Don Seaton, City Planning, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Are there any proponents here today?
Yeah. Jay Lund, Greenside Development, 3555 Farnum Street, here to answer any questions. Councilwoman Goodwin, welcome and congratulations. I was here for the agreement. You were here last, last week, yep.
Thanks, Jay. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 93, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. I want to get better at this. Councilwoman John, Councilwoman Goodwin, you're recognized.
Pardon me, Mr. Lund. You're not getting off the hook that he's doing.
Yes, I.
First of all, thank you for your kind words, but just wanted to learn a little more about the project, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So the address is 3501 Farnum Street. It's the site of the former WWT TV station. If you drove by there today, it's actually a big demolition project, so it's about 75% of the way gone. It's a five-story building, 187 apartments, located pretty close to directly on the streetcar line there. So our traditional parking ratios that we've been doing in Blackstone the last 10-plus years that are lower than, than normal and trying to be as efficient with the land that we have and, and other parking alternatives down there. Highly amenitized. There's a swimming pool plan for the back courtyard. It's a U-shaped building that faces south, and it'll be another great addition to the neighborhood. Much-needed, more much-needed housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Public hearing is closed.
Item 93, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Thomas H. Warren, Sr., LLC.
I'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents here today? Chief Warren, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of Omaha City Council, Thomas Warren, 1819 Farnum, seeking your approval for my reappointment as Chief of Staff, Mayor John Newing. Answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here on item number 93?
Louis Humennis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Congratulations to everybody that's new and staying. I was actually anticipating a higher turnover with the executive, but I don't think that's going to happen. However, I did support this service agreement where it was previously before council because of the 3% per year increase in the, in compensation. I think it's very important that, to be gainfully employed, to get an increase of at least 3% or, or to cover inflation so that as time goes by that your, the ability for you to buy things doesn't depreciate. And so that, that was basically what I said last time because of the 3%. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today?
Yes, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, Johnson E. Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I'm happy for Mr. Tommy Warren so he can help Mr. John Newing, our new mayor, and keep him on track because I've noticed a lot of mayors are going to jail these days.
Are there any opponents to item number 93? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. I'm sorry. I want to get better at this. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
We are. Wanted to personally thank you for making the commitment to stay on another four years. I think the city's in a better position with you up on the third floor. I have all the confidence in the new mayor, but I also have equally amount of confidence in your abilities and knowledge. So thank you for making the commitment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goodwin, you're recognized.
I would just like to say again, congratulations. I concur with Councilmember Hug, but I also wanted to make the statement about the importance of institutional knowledge that Mr. Warren brings to this position. And I know some had concerns about how the cabinet remained in place, but I think that ensures stability. And so again, again, congratulations, Mr. Warren, for your reappointment.
Thank you. No further lights. Public hearing is closed.
Item 94, an ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement from the National Drug Control Policy Grant in the amount of $536,458.
I will open the public hearing on item number 94. Are there any proponents here? Seeing none, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Item 95, an ordinance to establish a Class A flammable liquids storage district, number A-170, located at 21212 West Q Road.
I'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents here on item number 95? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 96, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquids storage district, number B-227, located at 2901 Cummings Street.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 96. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents today? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 97 through 100 for the 2025 annexation package. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ordinance is to annex the areas located southeast of 204th Street and Blondo Parkway, northwest of 180th and Harney Streets, northeast and northwest of 168th and Fort Streets, northwest of 192nd Street and West Center Road.
I'll open the public hearings on items 97 through 100. Proponents, Mr. England, good afternoon.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chair and other members of the council. We're here for the proposed 2025 annexation package. There's a lot on this map, so I will quickly go through the individual study areas, but there are four individual areas that are proposed for annexation. The first being location Aloft Hotels and condominiums at about 180th, southwest of 180th and Burke. You have the Center Ridge mixed-use area at the northwest, or northwest corner of 192nd and West Center Road. And I'll give a brief summary here after I just show all these maps. The third one would be West Hampton Park. This is 204th and Blondo Parkway, some strip office and commercial. And then the largest area would be Stone Creek Residential, as well as Flanagan Lake, which is already city-owned, but it's not part of the city limits at this time. So the proposed package would annex approximately 3,500 people based on the U.S. Census Bureau Annual American Study, with the majority of those being in the Stone Creek Residential area. The timing of the annexation of Flanagan Lake is consistent with the city's annexation of other large dam sites and lakes, such as Lake Cunningham, Standing Bear, and Lake Zarinski. The annexation includes approximately $442 million in real estate property valuation with a projected 10-year city cost revenue of a positive $5.2 million. I'm here to answer any questions. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on June 2. We mailed out packages which were previously provided to all you council members, information about the city and city services, what an annexation looks like, what city council district they would be part of. So we had about 50 or 60 people that showed up to the open house. It was at Saddle Brook Community Center on June 2. We had planning board on June 4. There was nobody in attendance that spoke and seeking your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Eric, maybe just a couple of follow-up questions for you and/or maybe the Finance Department.
Sure.
So I think when you're analyzing potential annexation, which we do every year, some of your main factors are, is it contiguous? Does the debt ratio make sense? So it's a positive to the city? And can we provide the necessary city services? And I think you've done that here. And typically, all residents that come into the city have actually a property tax reduction. Is that also the case here?
That is correct. Yes, every, every residential property is receiving a reduction in their property taxes. I can't speak for the office commercial component. I would need to divert a finance on that. But yes, every, every residential property has a decrease in there.
Thank you for that. And then what do you see in the future? This is a relatively modest annexation package, I would say, although we've had modest ones in recent years. When you did analysis around, surrounding SIDs, how are things looking in future years?
Yeah, so, you know, I didn't, I didn't go through the process. Most of you are familiar with that. Obviously, this is Councilmember Goodwin's first go-around as, as council member. Sorry, that doesn't show up very well showing the SIDs. My apologies. But early in the year, the mayor's office staff, Planning Department staff, and the Finance Department take a look at all of the SID. So there's, I don't know, I think there's maybe 80 to 100 of them that are within Douglas County. So we receive all their financial information. We look at the debt that they have. We look at, you know, potential revenue sources. So it's not just residential, it's office and commercial as well. And then there are areas that are not part of an SID. Oftentimes, those are apartment complexes that have been developed. So Finance, Planning, Mayor's Office staff, we take a very initial look and see what could be on, you know, best situated for the, for the city to annex. And after narrowing that down, we would send out, seeking information from other departments, Police Department, Public Works, Parks, for any potential, you know, are there any sewer issues? Are there any issues that we're not aware of with our departments? And, and so we do a more in-depth look, you know, how many police, how many fire might need to be added if, if an area is annexed. And once we do a detailed review, that's usually anywhere between five and 15 SIDs or areas. We narrow down if, if there are any that are financially beneficial to the city, and, and these are the four that made the cut this year. I guess looking ahead, I, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but we take a fresh look every year. And, and sometimes, you know, things, things change, especially with office commercial areas, just because they have that additional sales tax revenue. So, you know, the, the residential neighborhoods, usually it's a, it's a slower process, you know, a few years out, we, we know which ones might be on, you know, the shortlist for annexation. So it's always a balancing act with, with the residential and the office commercial.
Good. Thank you. And I assume most of those SIDs you're looking at are probably northwest and southwest?
Yeah. Like I said, sorry, this map doesn't do a good job, but typically, the majority of our SIDs are in the southwest and northwest portions of our jurisdiction, just because that's where the new growth has, has occurred. There are a few SIDs, you know, I guess more in the core of the city, but that's not very common. We, we have maybe a couple northeast that are older in nature, but those usually have, have problems and stay on the do-not-annex list.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. No further lights.
Non-action items, items 101 through 123 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. Reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn. Row call.
Goodwin, Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton, Rowe, Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:04.